Like to call this meeting to order pursuant Master General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. Hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made. If anyone else wishes to record, please let the Chair. Know before you do. First up, we have minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Of February twenty-fourth.
Yeah, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted.
Well, second. It's seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do a vote call. Conrad?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
No, yeah, he can be, Peter can still vote. Peter?
Aye.
Okay. Uh. Next up, correspondence. I don't see anything.
The sign.
The sign, yeah.
The sign, yeah. He's only one.
And let's try to decipher where these, oh, Lee Premium Outlets, yada, yada.
Peter, I forgot to send these to you. It's two sign permits, one for the premium outlets and another.
Do you know?
Yeah, go ahead.
Doesn't. Change your name or sterile, so she didn't change her sign.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, they did change your sign.
Okay, did change his sign. Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm okay.
Peter, pull that out here.
No, we're on paper clips now.
Do we need a motion or just?
No, we're just, we're just for information.
Yep.
And we have the town warrant in front of us, which I guess would be correspondence, right, for the baby town meeting?
Could be. I had it ready for if anyone wanted to come ask questions. This is what the public will see.
No, we'll be leaving this court. Yeah.
What's that?
Two weeks for a meeting again, right? Before the twentieth?
Nope. Twenty-second week. Nope, that's next, next Thursday is the twentieth, which is special town meeting.
Wow.
At seven, at the high school.
Oh, and the trust fund is in here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, do you know what the Tamarack real property, what this?
Which, which one?
Article three, sorry.
Oh, I have one I found on this thing. Um, both of these, so, um.
Two and three?
I don't know, Article three. I don't know. Um, oh, sorry, I do know. So the Tamarack property is the property that is, I believe, next to the school in that area. It looks like a property there. Landers Road is near our reservoir.
Yeah.
Next, our watershed protection.
Thank you.
Yeah. And specifically the zoning articles are nine through.
Hmm, wonderful.
Thirteen was a missed type, so there is no Article thirteen. So it's just one less article than it sounds, but, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, girls only articles. It's probably the last articles.
Article six is the, uh.
Yep.
It's only getting for D B A administrator.
I think, you know, that's another big time. You know, the area. I mean, another area, not our town, but another one.
Um, the housing trust, Chris Britton and I have a meeting with E M S. Yeah, Boston.
Ooh, good idea.
Wow.
Wow.
That girl is amazing.
I know. We've been doing a meeting with E M S boss in the Collin Center, and so this is the bylaws for creation of a housing trust.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All your men.
Oh, boy. With all the one.
I'm gonna read all this over and make a.
They just pages and pages of strike, striking.
Hmm.
That's, who knows, who knows?
Yeah, I see that ninety-nine years. I'm ready to build. When are we gonna be? I hate to take this property, buy it for ninety-nine years, but never gonna happen.
So, Sean Rennie just joined the Zoom as well.
Okay. It's ninety-nine years, but subject to?
No. Well, they're gonna declare it surplus for up to ninety-nine years, the towns. That's the article.
Specifically for L Y A.
Yeah.
Right.
So if L Y A. decides not to do it.
That's my contention also.
So it should be subject to.
I would, I would like to, and I will ask on the floor.
I don't think you can. You can't make it more restrictive. You can make it less restrictive.
Right.
As, I, why would the piece of property sit for ninety-nine years?
Is it, is it foreseeable useful?
Well, it was put for Ballfield.
Yeah.
Who says whether we're going to have a bigger school or a smaller school? Ninety-nine years. I won't be here to see it, I'll tell you that.
I don't think any.
Even Brooke, you know, even Brooke. Reality. Wait a minute. Modern medicine, come on.
You never know. I don't want.
Sorry, Peter, we're, and Sean, we're just killing time till six fifteen right now. Is there any public comment? You're not any public comment, right, or?
Um. Oh, I'm just here because I want, I had a question, and after you present.
Okay.
And I thought I could ask it.
Yeah, that's the appro, that's the appropriate time. At six fifteen, we're gonna open the public hearing.
Okay.
Zoning is just so exciting. I don't know why that either. People like to complain about it. They do.
Um, our next scheduled meeting will be the twenty-fourth.
Oh, twenty-fourth.
Put that out there while we're, while we're here and have some time. Yeah, I think it will be a pretty busy meeting, so. Not yet, yeah.
What do we find out?
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, you're on the whole bridge capital. Oh, you're on the D P W board. Guys, don't we see, look at, look at nervous, you're just like us.
Hmm, I know.
Well, at least we have it. I'm glad we have it. That's, I'm surprised and Capitol Outlay, that, and they aren't putting any in, anything into the, the fire department stabilization this year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I was really surprised. I guess a thirty-two million dollar building.
See where this is going, so me, Charlie. Yeah, there's more to come.
But that's in Capitol Outlay. The more, I thought.
It was going to. This, what this deal is, there's, there's two of them made already. Um, in classes. We're gonna lock one in over here, not next year. So it's, it's a good thing. It's, you know, just that we seem to find all kinds of funds.
It's okay.
Shouldn't be having, you shouldn't be finding them.
I, I would guess that finance committee is aware of it. I don't like that. No, but I bet they were.
We should have come up with an audit. For all these years?
Yeah, but it's in, probably a little bit, it's always been in there, right?
Um, it was added on one, in previous town administration.
Okay.
Buck.
Yes, sir.
If you're putting together the agenda for next meeting, please add the discussion of the, um, ADU.
Oh, of course. Yep, we're on that.
Thank you.
And you might say, I'm thinking about the Capitol, right? Many of Capitol, yeah, thing I'm on.
C P A.
Yeah.
Gee, yeah.
Those are talking about agenda. We're supposed to talk about the price chopper.
Yeah, I thought we were going to. That would be on the agenda.
Something proud about tonight?
I don't think we can. Um.
Can we put that on the agenda for next?
Big agenda, okay. It'll be brief.
You know, just more of an update to find out what.
We could put it on there, we can, if we don't discuss it, we can carry it over.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, and it wasn't the last meeting. We said more information, we'll find out, but we have to have it on the agenda.
Yeah, we did.
That kind of how it was.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
I, and this one, we really just wanted to keep it lean to the, to the public hearing.
Especially for, um, since since we can't go over seven o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah.
Two other quick things here. Everybody know what's going on at the office? There's a lot of excavation going on in one, the one end. Construction quick up there.
Haven't been up there.
Up there a couple days. What's going on?
Yeah, you know when you're going on the rotary?
Yes, I do.
The nine o'clock position as you're going around the road.
Oh.
There's a bunch of excavation, a bunch of construction, fencing up.
No, no, I didn't see it.
Building something?
Some up there.
Okay.
Because of, uh, got the screening along the fence, you know, just constructing fencing there, the screening there, but, when you drive by, when it's working like today, when we buy, it was open. You see where they form out, kind of, forms, it just. Like, you know, building stuff going on, I, I don't know. It's nothing.
Somebody should know, you know, maybe the building department.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing was brought to us.
No.
At this point.
No.
But, um, there's, 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 too many was planned on the Cape Street, there's a whole lot of excavation going in out there.
Way out almost Beckett Road, you mean?
Oh, I know it. That is gonna be another entryway. Church has booked for a batching plan.
No kidding?
Yep.
A badge plan?
Yeah, remember, they used, they tried using that access before. The state shut them down because it's on a blind corner. Looking at the opening, yes, yeah, what, the last I heard it's gonna be.
How far up is that, or where is it on Cape Street?
That's the True Bike Bridge.
Huh.
Yeah, it's after the, the houses. They actually enter for, as you're going around the corner, and then they start with a couple that are back off the road and, uh, the old dog boarding place.
Yeah.
Right.
Past the canal.
Yeah.
Oh, the canal, yeah.
So there's excavation going on in there. If you're talking about a batch plan, is that subject to review? It's industrial use?
He gets to the water.
Yeah.
That's what they are.
They do, um.
Ten seconds.
I got fourteen, six fourteen, um.
Okay.
I bet you they're gonna be under pre-existing non-conforming.
Pre-existing non-conforming, badge plan?
Well, gravel fit.
I, I would say the state's gotta give them a curb cut.
It's six fifteen, you're good.
Okay, we got six fifteen. I'd like to, um.
It might have it.
Open up a public hearing on our zoning edits, and I have a, uh, prepared statement. Peter, you with us? I, I have the statement that you were so kind to put together for us.
Yes, I'm here.
The, the word, I'm, um, okay. There's a howdy, housing shortage in Ala, Massachusetts in Lee. We don't have enough rentable entry-level apartments or affordable single-family or multi, multifamily housing. Many people in town have told us that the price of the existing housing stock is terribly high, and that their grown children cannot afford to return to Lee after the, after finishing their education. The town's master plan recognized this problem. It reported that the typical price for a single-family house was two hundred and eighty thousand with monthly housing costs at two thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars, uh, median average. The plan, the, the master plan directed the planning board to review the existing zoning for barriers to a diversity of housing types. It also directs the board to consider ways to appropriately integrate new housing into existing neighborhoods. Lee's zoning was enacted about fifty years ago, has served the town well in many ways. Most of the town has been developed in the single-family residence with a reasonable vital downtown. But multifamily housing seems to have been disfavored. We do have multi, multi-dwelling district, but it is quite small. Elsewhere in town, new multi-dwellings require an expensive special permit, which is obtained not just from the usual zoning boards, but from the select board. Procedurally, extra studies and bonds are required. So substantive, oh, boy, forget that one. Substantively, setback requirements are more arduous and big. And the big thing is that no more than four units can be constructed on any lot, no matter how large it is. And so after fifty years of this, we do have a small number of multifamily dwellings, but none are being built outside of the Eagle Mill. Lee residents often complain that the prevailing rents are very high for apartments, but one cause seems to be that we have a severely limited supply. This proposal is designed to relax some of those restrictions. Mainly, mainly, we propose allowing more units per lot, as well as aligning the setbacks between single-family and multifamily. Um, and also other restrictions that were put on multifamily dwellings. Also, we propose making the existing adaptive reuse bylaw, the A-Rod, apply more broadly, and we propose allowing multiple dwellings under some circumstances in the outlet village. In doing this work, the board also discovered some parts of the bylaw that were confusing, difficult to administer, and self-contradictory. And so this pro, proposal also makes some efforts to simplification, and you'll see all the stroke, the strike, um, verbiage through this. For example, the proposal includes single table dimensional requirements, which has reduced some of the existing requirements, but which is simpler and easier to find than our current two tables in, in an appendix. We also have deleted some existing language in the bylaw that is unnecessary or confusing. This proposal meets a real need in Lee for more diverse housing stock. It makes multifamily housing less forbidding, and it makes the existing bylaw clearer and less contradictory. We hope the town will support this.
Very nice.
Thank you, Peter.
Very nice.
You're welcome.
Um, I guess I'll, we've all talked about this. We voted on it. We sent it to the select board. Any, you have a comment, Pam?
Um.
Or a question?
Two questions.
Yep.
Even though you're not, the presentation, I think in the C R zone.
Yep.
The D M Road or Beckett Road, and it's always been three acre zoning.
Yes.
And now it's being reduced to two acres, is that correct?
It is.
And is it because of what we just said?
Yeah, I think in reviewing a lot of it, um, three acres seems, it, we understand the concept at the time um, to save our open spaces, but three acres has seemed to put a lot of big plots, you, you know, instead of, you, you know, you could tighten that up and then still have adequate open space. It, it wouldn't be more, it, it, we wouldn't lose much open space out of it.
Um, and my other question is, in the C R zone, um, multifamily houses will average?
Not right now, they will be.
They will.
Yep.
And how many, you mean, it's a multi, does that mean two?
No, it's, right now, it is, it is by right a one or two family. Okay, multifamily is up to eight. Yep. Um, it does, it does seem like a bit, but we have some adaptive reuse places that have put in ten or more in neighborhoods. And honestly, it, it, we have not seen any impact with it.
Okay, could you have a question, add a question? Um, how off my road is ten houses, is it a half, and it's a private road? It's not a town road. We pay to have it plowed and maintained each year. So will this apply to a private road area?
Zoning still does, yes. Yep. Okay. Anyone want to add to those? The answers I gave are inadequate?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other comments? Sean, how you doing?
You're saying, I think Sean can't hear you.
Got you now.
I'm doing well. How are you, Mr. Chair?
Good. Any comments on this?
No, I just came to listen in.
Yep, and, um, it, I don't know if you know, but Gordon was involved with this, of course.
Oh, I, I was, uh, I was, uh, pretty certain of that.
Well, you, you really don't wanna do any zoning without having him involved.
No, 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 no.
Um, he's already gearing up for the A D U, so. Oh, yeah, and he, um, he gave the blessing on this. He, actually, I, I wouldn't be surprised if he was instrumental in some of the original texts that, that we had done here, or that was in our bylaw, not that we changed. So, ma'am, I'm also in the C R zone, and, and what I've noticed is I have my house and I maintain about one acre, and the rest I pay taxes on. Yeah.
I kind of take care of the law and so on.
It is, three acres can be, you know, it's a lot more than your yard. Yeah, I mean, I, I have other property that's, you know, fields and stuff, but as far as my dwelling, it's, it's usually, I'm within one acre easily, so.
And the frontage on a house, it's, it would be two hundred feet, with the whole two acres, is that how it works, or?
If your frontage is, is what's against the, a road, a town road or a private road.
It would be four hundred feet if they put two houses?
Yes, um, well, two full houses, then that'd be two lots. You, you'd have to have, you know, four acres, okay? Which.
Two hundred, or two acres.
Right, per two acres. Now, I don't know if you've seen in the news, but it coming is accessory dwelling units, which is a.
I got the meeting last year in the.
Yep. Yeah, so that's coming, um, but those are not, they're a maximum of nine hundred square feet, so it's not gonna be a full house. It's gonna be ha, half the, half the main house or nine hundred square feet, whichever is left.
Right.
All right, um, any, anyone else? Questions?
One thing I will say is after we sent it to our town attorney to review, one thing, the first, um, article that we originally had was a complete repeal of the table. And, um, upon further review, if the table was repealed on the motion, and the next motion, which is replacing the table, wasn't voted in, then we wouldn't have any dimensional requirements, so instead of having one article to repeal and then a second to replace, we just have one to replace. We sent it to you.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So that was just one thing. That was the only thing that was changed, and then, like I mentioned, Article thirteen doesn't exist, but.
Yep.
Brooke, this, does article, does the combined article repeal both tables or just table one?
It replaces the table dimensional analysis as posted below, so. And if, if, if the writing is that we still have to repeal another table, we can repeal another table at the annual town meeting at May.
Well, we should, we should make sure that what we pass at this meeting repeals both table one and table two in the existing bylaw.
Just the only hesitate, as long as it's in the same motion was the only hesitation, and not to make it be two separate articles, because if we were to vote to repeal all tables and then.
No, I understand that. I, I understand that. I just wanna make sure we aren't dropping anything, you know, in between, uh, pieces of furniture here on the floor. Is, is, uh, what, what, could you read the, uh, the, uh, new wording of the article?
To see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, chapter and one ninety-nine, five dash, five point one dimensional requirements by adding underlying text, removing strikeout text, and replacing the table dimensional requirements as posted below, or take any other action relative thereto.
Does it say table or tables plural?
Table of dimensional requirements, table.
Yeah, there's two, there's two tables. Well, okay, we'll have to figure out what to do about that, but I wanna make sure that both of them get repealed.
It, it's replacing, so.
Yeah, but I, I, it said, the way she read it was a singular table of dimensional requirements.
We're replacing two, but modifying, we're modifying two.
Mm-hmm.
To come to one.
I mean, would that, would that be an amendment, you think, on the floor?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I need to consult with people to think it over. Um, maybe, I don't know if Code three sixty could advise us on whether that's sufficient to accomplish what we intend.
Yeah, I can reach out to them, and also, again, if not at the annual town meeting, we can also just have a motion to repeal the remaining table if there is one.
I'd rather get it now, if we can amend it on the floor.
Yeah, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a period of time where we have some old and some new bylaw. This was a comprehensive change that depended on repeal of table two. And if table two continues to coexist with the new language, there could be confusion. And it'd be much worse confusion than the thing that you're preventing by.
I think, I think this will be, when we get to it, um, a question for Jeremiah right there.
Okay, okay.
You know, and if we need, if we need to clarify, I think that could.
Good.
Okay.
That was.
So. Well, snap.
I think. I think we're all set. Um, at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we will see everyone. Everyone in, that sees this video will see you at town meeting, and see you to these, uh, Warren articles too, not just after the first one, please.
Who would do that?
Dog.
I know. I know, I know.
The last meeting?
I know.
Once, once the fire department was done, everybody left.
I know, I know. Oh, yes, I know. I know.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's the way it's been for a long time now.
It, and, but that's how open town meeting is.
Yeah.
You know, I've, if you really wanna see something, watch Great Barrington's meetings. They, I mean, they will fill the, the whole auditorium out, and for one article, and then it, the entire three hundred people all walk out.
Hmm.
Un, unreal.
This is my first one, so I was shocked. Where is everybody going?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I don't have any topic.
Oh.
No.
Want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm fine with that. We can do that. Also, get Dan out of here on time, too.
Good.
On our off night.
Yeah.
I know, boy, you didn't.
No, I, I.
Oh, we adjourn, right, for Donna's.
So moved. All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, everyone.
I knew, I knew it was.